Good morning, everyone. Again, welcome to the Revised Total Colorform Rule APA Hearing. We are getting started now. So I would like to introduce Melissa, our Senior Supervising Water Resource Control Engineer that leads our Regulatory Development Unit. She's going to be giving this presentation today.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We're going to start by going over the Revised Total Colorform Regulations Timeline and Hearing Plan for the morning. Alongline overview of the purpose and benefits of the existing federal regulations and proposed state regulations. Then we'll get into the key provisions and highlights of the California-specific requirements before finishing up with a summary of the projected costs, taking a short break and going to public forum.
On February 13th, 2013, US EPA promulgated its revisions to the Colorform Rule or RTCR as replied by the State Water Act of November 18th, '86.
As regulations included an April 1st of 2016 deadline for public water systems across the country to comply with new requirements. At that deadline and date, California's Total Colorform Rule was still in effect. And then California Public Water Systems have been working to comply with both the federal RTCR, separate to federal enforcement, as well as California's Total Colorform Rule. In February 2017, State Water Board staff released a draft regulation text for California's revisions to the Colorform Rule and held six public workshops to receive public input. On October 30th, earlier this year, a notice of proposal making was published for our proposed revised for Colorform Rule. We're holding an Administrative Procedure Act public hearing today to receive oral comments and are closing the written comment period tomorrow at noon. That anticipates State Water Board consideration for adoption of these regulations in early 2021 with an anticipated effective date of the regulation coming next year. For today's hearing, the State Water Board will not be taking any action on the proposed regulations. The purpose of this hearing is to receive oral comments from the public. As I mentioned earlier, written comments are due tomorrow by noon. Written responses to all comments, both oral and written, will be provided in the final statement. The primary purpose of the proposed regulations is to maintain primary enforcement authority or privacy over the federal RTCR regulations through adoption of California drinking wine regulations that are never stringent in those policies by US EPA. In addition to the increased health protection afforded by the federal regulations, California almond elements to the proposed regulations are intended to enhance and uphold and protect our health by ensuring the integrity of the drinking wine distribution system and monitoring for the presence of The overall benefits of the proposed regulations include improving clarity requirements for water systems to increase specificity and reduce redundancy. Advancing public awareness of water quality served for requiring public notification when equally against snow and maximum containment level violation occurs. When a public water system fails to conduct a required assessment or corrective action to do it, no further continuation. We're looking to increase consumer confidence and safety of portable water supply, improve clarity and understanding of existing regulations regarding a significant rise in that true account. Driving the need for public water systems from a burden of stock and compliance with two different sets of regulations to several purposes, and generally to include overall public health as well. As described in the cost estimating methodology that a company noticed of proposed rulemaking and the initial statement of reasons, the proposed regulations can be divided into three categories. The first category includes those regulations that are subjectively identical to other requirements. For these, any associated costs are already being incurred by California Public Water Systems because they're required to comply with the federal regulation regardless of other California docs of federal regulation. Second category includes California-only requirements that have a potential for costing. It includes requirements of cost impact, which I'll summarize later, and changes of negligible or non-conrollable costing. The third category includes state-only requirements or changes with no cost impacts. For this category, if the proposed regulations change existence of regulations for a purpose of non-subjectory changes. It follows italics correcting ground pollution, anti-therapeutic measures, and other gendered requirements, and none of those would result in additional cost to regulatory community. It also included requirements for seasonal systems to monitor and certify the completion of state-approved startup procedures. Requirements for assessments and corrective action when monitoring results show that public water systems may be vulnerable to contamination. Public notification requirements for violations. And specific language for community water systems to include in their annual consumer confidence reports, they must conduct an assessment or if they could infer an equally A NCL violation. The vast majority of the regulations being proposed here are the same as those already included in the Revised Total Colorform Rule. The remainder of the presentation will be focused on the California-only requirements and the proposing. This is a list of all of the sections entitled twenty-two that are affected by the proposed regulation. Highlighted sections are those that have components, not even the whole thing, that are, would be California-specific requirements. Those that are highlighted with dollar signs are some of the ones that have California-specific elements. As described in the cost estimating methodology that a company noticed of proposed rulemaking and the initial statement of reasons, the proposed regulations can be divided into three categories. The first category includes those regulations that are subjectively identical to other requirements. For these, any associated costs are already being incurred by California Public Water Systems because they're required to comply with the federal regulation regardless of other California docs of federal regulation. Second category includes California-only requirements that have a potential for costing. It includes requirements of cost impact, which I'll summarize later, and changes of negligible or non-conrollable costing. The third category includes state-only requirements or changes with no cost impacts. For this category, if the proposed regulations change existence of regulations for a purpose of non-subjectory changes. It follows italics correcting ground pollution, anti-therapeutic measures, and other gendered references, while regented requirements, and none of those would result in additional cost to regulatory community. Because water systems have already been subject to federal RTCR requirements for a few years now, I'm going to briefly go over the highlights of those before focusing on the state-only requirements and especially those of future. Here are some of the key provisions of the Federal Revised Total Colorform. The rule established an equally maximum containment level of NCL for protection against potential people contamination. It set a color form treatment technique requirement and established requirements for monitoring total color form equally according to the bacteriological sample sampling plan. schedule specific to the public water system. The provisions allow public water systems to transition to the federal RTCR using their system for Colorform monitoring purposes. Cleaning public water systems on reduced monitoring of the system. It also included requirements for seasonal systems to monitor and certify the completion of state-approved startup procedures. Requirements for assessments and corrective action when monitoring results show that public water systems may be vulnerable to contamination. Public notification requirements for violations. And specific language for community water systems to include in their annual consumer confidence reports, they must conduct an assessment or if they could infer an equally A NCL violation. The vast majority of the regulations being proposed here are the same as those already included in the Revised Total Colorform Rule. The remainder of the presentation will be focused on the California-only requirements and the proposing. This is a list of all of the sections entitled twenty-two that are affected by the proposed regulation. Highlighted sections are those that have components, not even the whole thing, that are, would be California-specific requirements. Those that are highlighted with dollar signs are some of the ones that have California-specific elements. So key, some of the key provisions of the proposed California requirements. Include requirements for bacteriological monitoring groundwater, not including those for groundwater under the direct influence. Or beauty source that is treated with a primary or residual disinfectant on a continuous basis and for revising bacteriological sample second plans to include the source. The proposed requirements for public water systems on reduced bacteriological monitoring to return to routine biological monitoring. And set requirements for color form density determinations of twelve qualificent if directed by the State Water Board. We're proposing to eliminate the monthly bacteriological result summary for systems collecting only one sample per month. And to clarify the minimum monthly summary elements for public water systems collecting more than one sample per month and still set up a summary report. Proposing requirements for a report on corrective action when monitoring results indicate possible significant rise in bacterial count. And requirements for seasonal system startup procedure components. Actions to be taken prior to serving water to the public and the revision allowing an alternate to just We are including a few definitions for clarity. The most of these definitions are, some of the definitions are already included elsewhere and are just being carried into the section of the regulations for clarity and sort of what it's all contained. We're proposing that for a groundwater not movie that is continuously disinfected and not monitored over the surface for its removal, that water systems must collect at least one raw water sample per quarter. And that if the sample result is totally positive, the monthly sampling is required. If after three consecutive months of no color from detections, the public system must return to for the monitoring purpose. For water systems, would be required to maintain training documentation for personnel performing sample collection and/or field tests. Plans and procedures and requests must be made and write into the state board or the local privacy agency and include the basis for support. If directed by the State Water Board, new bacteriological sample setting plans would be required to be developed and submitted to the state board or a local privacy agency within three months after the RTCR effective date for review and approval. If required, the plan must include a physical location of routine wiki and groundwater real sample. Between repeat sample sites represented in patient system and water source reservoirs. Requirement that routine samples could be rotated or optional, as far as that routine samples could be rotated with the number of bacteriological sample setting from site succeeds the minimum number of The proposed regulations would require that sampling be done in accordance with the approved bacteriological sample setting plan that has been approved either by the state board or the local privacy agency. An updated bacteriological sample setting plan is required at least once every ten years. And now would be within thirty days of when the public water systems or state board or local privacy agency determines that the plan is no longer representative of the public large. Or within thirty days when the public large is returning in alternative points of location or the standard operating procedure for repeat rights or dual purpose. For any quarter in which a water system serves one thousand or fewer persons in each month and uses only groundwater, not groundwater under the direction of them, and if the criteria in exceptions or regulations were met, the system would be allowed to submit a request to the water board to monitor. At a reduced sampling. Requests must include historical data that demonstrates that has served one thousand or fewer persons each month of the time of clear report. A and must include revised bacteriological sample setting for one. Unfiltered surface water systems will sample at least once, one sample per day at or before each service connection, that's the California-specific element. For each day on which the humidity level of source water, the overall water exceeds one. All routine and other samples would still be reported as presence absence, although we would be having a memory result too. But if directed by the state board based on an identified sanitary defect exceeding to the level one or level two call. However, history to the color from positive samples within the past months or determination of a positive rise in bacteria count and priorities. Six analytical results could be required to be reported in terms of color form density of total color form equally in the sample which is appropriate. Water systems would also be required to provide their language for any contact information to this public compliance with the issue required. Section six four four two three point one, all analytical results must be reported to the state board or local privacy agency Friday tenth day of the following month. Water systems serving greater than four hundred service connections must submit a monthly summary of actionable results to the state board or local privacy agency. And as I mentioned earlier, we're posing to no longer require monthly summary reports for small bars with fewer than four hundred service connections or, in other words, one sample per month or less. And we did specify the minimum content of the system still required to submit the monthly summary. For water systems serving fewer than ten thousand service connections with thirty-three thousand people others are picture monkey summer requirement. We're requiring labs to submit copies of all of our bacteriological results directly to the water board or local privacy agency. If a water system serving more than ten thousand service from more than forty-three people. We'd require that laboratory to submit, water system must require the lab to submit copies of all positive to Now in section six four four two three point one, for public water systems failing to test the same sample, to test the same sample for equally falling to a total count positive. Routine sample results, it would be required to notify the state water board or the local privacy agency within ten days after one of the monthly of the monitoring violation and we would be required to There's reports to the state board or local privacy agency within two days will be considered for the violation and with require the public water system to conduct tissue Moving on to section six four four two six for the significant rise in bacterial count. While the revised Total Colorform Rule replaces the Total Colorform NCL public identification with a testament correction, there would still be cases that would indicate a possible significant rise in bacterial count. If there is one, then the public water system would be required to conduct an investigation of possible causes within twenty-four hours of the testing full notification. And would be required to submit this data's information to the water board or local privacy agency. Water systems also have to submit an investigative report within forty days to the board or the local privacy agency. Identifying sanitary defects and timelines for corrective actions for those Possible significant rise condition would require the public water system to conduct an investigation possible in twenty-four hours or submit the results. They would also best determine whether a significant, possible significant rise in bacterial count has occurred for each month in which it is required to monitor for total color form. And any samples that are not invalidated by the state water board or the laboratory must be included in that determination of level of Now in section six four four two six, the three cases that would trigger a possible significant rise in bacterial count if the, or public water systems collecting forty or more routine samples per month. A routine total Colorform positive sample, if one is followed by two positive repeat samples or if a water system has a sample that is positively equally. Or if a water system fails equally, that is all and trigger If the significant rise and a possible significant rise in bacterial count investigation triggered, that those investigations must include The current operating procedures and records, interruptions in the equipment process, and monitoring of the system pressure loss to less than five house per storage. Analyze and or unauthorized access evidence that would indicate contamination and local results of additional sampling if necessary and can be almost Within twenty-four hours, you receive notification from the state water board or the local privacy agency of a significant rise in bacterial account, the public water system must implement its legislative. Moving on to section six four four two six point nine, I think this is the last. For seasonal systems and startup homes, they are due within three months of being infected due to the regulation and if directed by the state or one or LPA. They would be required to include notification of system shutdown in prior to serving one. That's the water system components, disinfection question procedures, bacteriological and priming residual sampling plans, use of certified distributors for startup procedures. Failure to notify the state water LPA and to failure to set starting up startup sample results would require probably Water systems would be allowed to propose an alternative startup plan. They may be appropriate if the entire distribution system remains pressured during the seasonal closure. Water systems may request extensions from startup requirements and alternatives must provide equivalent protection of public Seasonal system startup and shutdown startup requirements are to serve in the public. The water system would need to perform the actions described in its approved startup plan. Would need to certify to the state board or local privacy agencies that the approved startup plan had been implemented. Notification would include the results of bacterial logical and residual same. And A written approval from the state water board or LPA to serve public to Now I'm going to go into a summary of the cost estimates. All the assumptions, data sources and methodology used in estimating processes with the non-federal elements of the proposed regulation are described in detail in the process submitting methodology available on our own making website. The table shown here is taken from two of the process and mean, and summarizes the estimate for the costing. There was, you can see that annual increases from the raw water, biological monitoring, statewide That's offset in part by a decrease for the monthly color form, some of the both reduction for those systems. There's also a loss of previous costs and means are really, um, under the option to go to a lower frequency for bacteriological monitoring, and then their one-time costs are associated with updating bacteriological And then looking ahead for the first three years after the regulation takes effect, that first year would look like state wide, the total cost would be two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. And about two hundred and nine thousand dollars per year on an ongoing base. Costs that we couldn't consider, couldn't consider adequately are ones that are dependent on conditions that These are the ones we can back to months, those are the costs that For more information, the initial statement of reasons or process submitting methodology, the text of those recommendations. The notice of proposed rulemaking and other rulemaking documentation available are or will be available at our rulemaking website at the page listed above. You can also contact me at the email address provided on this page or at the VAW R G at waterboards.ca.gov. That is the end of our staff presentations. I think that's been able to narrow about a time for a break and to see if we can get the rest in the
Yes, thank you. So we are going to be taking a quick break before comments. We're going to resume at ten oh five to give everyone a little bit of time. Again, if you would like to comment, you can email us at ddwregunit@waterboards.ca.gov to get the meeting password. So thank you, everyone, and we'll be right back at ten oh five. We do have one person in the lobby with a phone number. If you'd like to be admitted, please email us at ddwregunit@waterboards.ca.gov so we can confirm your participation. Thank you. Okay, I think we're about to get started with comments. Give a couple minutes for everyone to get ready. Our first commenter is going to be Dawn White from Golden State Water Company, followed by Ashley Boudet from Heritage Systems Incorporated. Dawn, you should be able to unmute yourself. And you can share your camera if you wish. Yes.
Yeah. Good morning. My name is Dawn White and I'm the Water Quality Manager for Golden State Water Company. First of all, I'd like to express my support for the adoption of the proposed RTCR. Water suppliers have been having to comply with separate state and federal rules and we all look forward to having the one clear standard. I also agree that California's proposed rule builds on the federal rule and provides additional public health protection. The rule, the draft of the rule was released in two thousand seventeen and comments were solicited at that time. I appreciate that I had the opportunity to work with staff to address several areas at that time, including the use of enumeration or density methods versus the presence absence testing. And I believe my comments were adequately addressed. And I look forward to the long awaited adoption and implementation of California's revised total call from role. Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Next up, we have Ashley Boudet from Heritage Systems Incorporated. And Ashley, you should be able to unmute yourself and share your camera if you wish. If you're having issues, you can chat to us in the chat box. Okay, we're just going to give a couple more seconds for Ashley in case she wants to comment. Okay. I think we have her listed as a maybe comment, so it's possible that she decided not to comment. Again, if you're having any technical difficulties, please contact us. And we'll be sure to get your comment in. But for now, we have no more commenters, so I think we're going to take a quick couple minute break, just in case Ashley wants to comment, or in case anyone else would like to sign up for comments. Thank you, guys. Okay, I don't think we have any more commenters today. We are still accepting written comments until tomorrow at noon, so be sure to send those in in case you would like to. Thank you, everyone, for participating and we will post this recording online as soon as we can. I hope you all enjoyed the meeting and thank you for joining us.